All right, I got four o'clock. We're gonna call this study session order. If you could join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, a nation, God, divisible as a cross.
All right, thank you. Thank you to everyone who's here or anyone who's online. We have Ms. Gledhill joining us online for the first part of the study session. And so we will just welcome her when she gets here. So we will go ahead and start tonight's study session will be the superintendent student advisory council partnering with board members to discuss the district mission and then cabinet objectives. So I will turn this over to Mr. Hanson to kick us off.
Thank you, President Galbraith. We have, and I'm so excited for this, this part. Having our students and listen to their voices is a very paramount component to the things that we do because of the four young individuals in the room are the reason that we have the jobs that we currently have. So with that being said, first I'm gonna have, let's see, I need to do a little quick switch here. And I need to do this.
We're missing a student?
Unfortunately, we had one that was ill and the one that had an obligation, a family obligation. So having said that, we have a pinch hitter.
Ooh.
Yeah. Okay. So what I'm gonna have them do for, and before I'm gonna bring them up, I'm just gonna remind the board real quickly of our mission. And our mission is to provide a safe environment in which all students reach their highest potential to graduate well prepared for success and post secondary education work in life. We talked about this collectively and kinda got a sense of what we felt like that meant relative to our obligations as board members, and I talked to you about our leadership work. What I would like to focus in on right now, because I think this started to permeate in our conversation, is what does it mean to be well prepared? So what I thought is we would ask our experts, you know, what does that mean? So I'm gonna have them do. We have three, okay, so we might share.
We can jump in.
Okay, so we'll share. So Angel, if you'll go with Mr. Connors right here. Diego, will you go with Mr. Valentine, Mr. Galbraith? And Teddy, if you'll come over here to Mr. Miller. I have a couple of questions. I'm gonna get to those here in a second.
Good to see you, Diego.
Okay. Okay. So I know that being good stewards and folks that are good at introducing, you've introduced yourself, hopefully get a chance to say hello. You have very extraordinary young people here. So again, the idea is well prepared. So the first question, you're gonna kinda get a little bit of sense of this, just figure out, get to know these young folks. What do they plan to do after high school? And by the way, I've prepped them, so they can say whatever they want. Go ahead. Okay, I'm gonna give you about a minute to kinda wrap that up, because we have more. You're getting closer. Okay, I'm gonna have you wrap that, kinda last thought up.
Yeah.
It's good. It's good. All right, sorry to interrupt. No, we're good.
We'll chat all day.
Okay, that's good. So the board is starting to dig into that component like, because here's kinda the root of this. Now, this is what I call the DNA of a student. It's not deoxyribomucilic acid. It's the DNA. It's their dreams, their, their needs and their aspirations or their abilities, right? So you kinda start talking to them about their dreams, what are you gonna do after school? What, what do you want to become? What we as a school looks at is, okay, what are the abilities that maybe you currently have and what are your needs to get you to your dreams? So what's the DNA of our students? So with that, now, and I know somebody started down this path, is the part of the mission. How are we, or how have you, this is why I challenge the board to ask these questions. How have we, or how have you been, Teddy, well prepared for your dream? Your next step? Because this is the crux, this is the foundational component that we're looking at of this part of our mission. So as you're talking about the next step, dig into that. How have we prepared? And I would also challenge the board to look at it systemically. Like, talk to me about your elementary experience, your middle school experience, and your high school. Because a lot of times we focus like, hey, the last year of school, what happened? We have an obligation from all of our children, three to 21 and 11 months and, yeah, 11 months. Okay? So let's see if we can maybe do that, and as you capture those, then we'll summarize or we'll do a little bit of share out about the DNA of our students and our obligation to meet that expectation that they've asked us. Yep, okay.
The one big thing is gonna be just in there.
Like, I feel like education should.
And then I took AP Bio.
So give it about one more minute. Okay, if you guys will kinda finish up your last thought there. Okay. All right, let's, we're gonna do just a quick little report out. I hope that this has been good for the board to get in, get some insight on our, our students and kinda, you know, what, what are we doing to help them get to where they wanna go? Because ultimately, that becomes what we're looking for. So I have somebody, I'm gonna take some notes here a little bit about the three components. So school, live post-education, or live work. So were there any things that resonated? Let's start with the, the things that you felt, the board gleaned, or a student wants to chime in, that's fine, about how they were well prepared for, if they were planning to go to some type of additional schooling, which could be a plus two, plus four, whatever. What are some things that the board got from our, as evidence? Because here's your evidence right here of what our system's doing. Any of the board members can go ahead. Brittany, I'm sorry, I told, I, I text Brittany and I told her, I promised that we would share it out, she would be able to hear us.
Yes, okay. So talking to Diego, Diego's obviously very thoughtful, you know, and he's just kinda thought a lot of this stuff through. I, I would say that he, he was kinda like, yeah, I feel like I'm prepared in the sense of, do I know the math? Do I know the, how to write properly? Do I know Microsoft documents? Yes. But then there's some life skills, maybe, you know, like, but the financial courses, you know, right, Diego, like the financial side. Couple of those components, he felt like, maybe that's, that's a missing piece. And I know we, we do have financial literacy, but, and, and we actually had it for a very short time, so. But anyway, I think that was one of the, one of the big takeaways for me, right?
So Diego, if he's headed to Princeton, or wherever he's going, you feel like you've got the content to hang? Is that fair? Okay, all right, all right. Okay, anyone else? How about Teddy?
I'd echo, you know, that one of the things in talking, obviously, we don't know how successful they'll be in post-secondary education because they're still graduating. They haven't gone there yet, but, but in talking with, with Teddy, I've got a, a great student here, it sounds like he's, he's taken a ton of AP classes. He's really bright, probably at the top of our class. So I think we need to keep that in mind as we have this discussion, but these are the people we want our students to look like. So I think this is the ideal. And one of the things he said was, is that he doesn't remember middle school being a particularly big jump or difficult jump for him. And similarly, high school wasn't a particularly big jump or difficult jump for him. That, that it was a fairly smooth transition. And I think that's a, I would argue, is likely a good sign that the transition to the next level of post-secondary education, he's, he's looking to go to, to university. I think there's a good likelihood that'll be a, a smooth transition. Again, past performance is a good indicator of future performance. And he's, it sounds like these transitions, he's been well prepared for. And, and to kinda echo some of the things that, that that Mike and Diego had mentioned though, is perhaps some of the non-academic skills are, are more reliant on family and parent parent direction and teaching. So Teddy feels prepared for those, but I think, as he acknowledged, a lot of that is probably from parents and them helping to guide and teach him. So, so they're helping him more than perhaps the academic system. Not saying that one, just, yeah.
Okay, how about Angel?
Well, speaking of Angel, I'm certainly not concerned about her ability to go forward in the future. She's way smarter than I am. Everything she said that she believes so far that school has prepared her well. But again, I echo what Josh said, is I think there is some of the issues such as soft skills, interpersonal skills, are something that she feels is missing, and I, I would completely echo that. She'd also like to see, you know, she'd like to see some expanded internships, some other ability to expand the, the, how do we phrase this properly? Really get out in the workforce and learn by doing. She started the HUSA, the Health Occupation Studies of America, is that right? Students of America, Students of America. So she started that on her own because she's trying to find like-minded individuals in order to find a way to spend more time learning about healthcare. So, but again, expanded internships. And really, she said, she had a great, great quote, she said, "Education should extend beyond the classroom." So I thought that was very good.
Lance, I'd like to go back, just to, this'll take a step back, and I asked Teddy this, and I hope he, he doesn't feel put on the spot here. He did a great job. The interesting thing is, is I did ask Teddy how would he define success? That when he's old like us, how is he gonna define success? And, and I don't, you know, he, he perhaps struggled a little bit with that answer. Had, had kind of a concession, but, but I'm not sure, and perhaps that's one of the things that, that our high school students may benefit from, is starting to think about what does success in life look like? Because it's, if, if you don't know where you're, what you, where you wanna end up, then it's really hard to point yourself in that direction. You, you're just walking, and you don't know where you're going. We've, I've talked before about having a, you know, if you don't know where you're going, going into high school, you don't have a goal of what, what the end of high school's gonna look like, and where you're gonna go, then it's really hard to make decisions. Same thing here is, I think we need to help these young people think about what does success look like for them? How are they gonna judge whether they're successful in work? Whether they're successful in life, whether they're successful in the post-secondary education? Does it mean that they're the top in their class, or does it mean that they pass their classes, or does, what does it mean? And I think, think helping them think that through. We don't have to give them the answer, because each one of us will give a different answer. But they need to be thinking about the answer now, so that they can make, because they're making decisions and trying to figure this out. And the only way to know is to think about the long term first and then work their way backwards.
Okay. So we kinda melded those three together. Is there anything else that either that you gleaned from the students? That, because we're gonna go into board priorities now, so in other words, we're setting a roadmap, hopefully to address some of these things, and so we're trying to connect.
Now, a couple of other things in terms of preparing for post-secondary education, as well as work that, and specifically talking to Teddy. And, and again, I appreciated Teddy's honesty, because he, he just gave it to me straight. One is, is a lot of his experience in terms of occupations and majors, he's, again, looking to go to a university, is based around his family and the, the people he knows well. So our exposure to those things, and it sounds like, and, Angel, Angel, Angel may have expressed similar things. Their exposure to occupations and opportunities is somewhat limited. So they, their, their selection of majors and jobs may not be as broad. They, they, they don't know. And he, he actually said a, a great thing. He doesn't even know what he doesn't know. It's, it's just, there's a lot out there that he doesn't know in terms of jobs, so he's starting on the path with a very limited scope. Yeah.
I think like, I think one of the big things I talked to Mike here was that there's a big block in like learning outside of the classroom, I, I believe. That I think the key skills that I've learned that have prepared me for work in life, which of course I feel like my teachers and admin have added to that motivation to do stuff outside of school. I think most of like my interpersonal skills and my ability to seek my interests, I think it's come outside of the classroom through like community work and like other internships I have done. And I, I wish like I went and I seek those internships and those opportunities by myself. But I wish that students were more aware about those opportunities and had like internships avail, readily available to them. And one of the things I discussed with Mike here was that I think like even like just reaching out to different organizations, like we have like law firms in the tri-cities, like different like accounting places, like asking, like, would we be able to have our students intern here for school credit? Or maybe like, like, I don't know, I'm not very familiar with the system, but if there could be something implemented like that, I feel like we would be able to get students more interested in careers and attending post-secondary theory education. Yeah, thank you.
I, to echo that, actually, I was invited tonight, I was, I thought I'd be able to work both out, but unfortunately due to the, the board meeting, Delta High has a career fair tonight where they just have a bunch of different people from a bunch of different careers and a bunch of different areas, different job sectors coming and, and talking and meeting with students, giving them exposure to what else is out there. And I, I think, in talking with Teddy, that's one area where I, I think we may, we've got a, academically, you said, hey, we've got a lot of great things going on, but, but some of these non-academics. The other thing was, is he talked about, I, I asked him a little bit about his exposure to, to scholarships and to some of the financial aspects of things.
and to some of the financial aspects of things, which inevitably will impact some of the success here. And that's been largely driven by himself and his parents. It sounds like you've had a similar experience where you're, these opportunities, you're finding yourself. And perhaps we're under utilizing our counselors who might be able to provide some direct interaction with students in terms of, you know, whether scholarship opportunities, financial aid opportunities, internship opportunities, those kind of things will really expand the success of both in work and in post-secondary education, inevitably in life.
I know Diego wants to say something here, but I'll also say something real quick. So we do have those job fairs in every, all the high schools, you know, but then like, you know, you have Tri-Tech, you have Delta, who I think take it to the next level. They have like resume building opportunities where I know, like I've done interviews with these kids, they'll come and they'll bring an interview, you know, the resume, and we kind of go through the interview and do like a mock interview. So I think those are really good, but as far as I know, that's just Delta and Tri-Tech. It'd be great if our other high schools did that kind of thing too. I mean, just to have those kids like get that communication to an adult. And then Hawthorne has the Amazing Shake. And that is like, I mean, everybody who's been to that thing says, we should do it at every school. It's like the best thing ever. So those are kind of like, maybe a program you could have at a younger level, like the Amazing Shake, and then maybe more some, you know, resume type of, you know, mock interview type things for all the high schools.
And I think just to add on to that, and I really like what Dr. Miller said about this, is about exposure to just opportunities, all the opportunities, but you also have to teach the students, how can they get there? And this is something I was talking about with Mr. Galbraith and Mr. Valentine, is how if you're, you can be exposed to a job, but you need the preparation, you need the interpersonal skills. Things just like not using slang in speech, or even in emails. Trying to like break down that barrier of building this respect and this tone of language skills and interpersonal skills with adults. I think it's just a vital piece of not only exposing them to opportunities like jobs and internships and scholarships and colleges through like college visits, but also what are the means to get there? And how viable is it really for them to see themselves in that position?
I'll be brief, because a lot's been said. I think the one piece for me is we, we have a, in my opinion, we have potentially a cap on what we can teach educationally. There's only so many courses, there's only so much that we can teach a student. But one thing we can constantly teach that there is no cap on is the sky's the limit. You can do anything you put your mind to, right? So our students need to understand that regardless of your circumstances, you can do what you want, and how hard you work, and you're not going to be, you're not going to be capped on that. So just helping with the positive of, you know, work hard and you can do what you want, so.
Okay, go ahead, and then we're going to shift right into what the work the cabinet's going to do to make this come to fruition.
I think one thing that's happened over especially post-COVID was that like so many teenagers, especially like, specifically within like the upcoming classes, because they missed out on fifth, sixth, and seventh grade, which were like vital years transitioning into middle school. And I think they've missed out on a lot of communication skills. And I think even like not only proposing a class, I mean, maybe introducing speakers, like that can help establish those skills, like I think that could also maybe be a possibility. I'm not sure, but I think that's been a gap, especially with post-COVID.
Thank you, Angel. Well, I appreciate our students. I hope that this was an opportunity to have a voice from those who were, were hopefully having an impact, so that they can reach their highest potential as they leave our system. And I've said this before, another way to look at this, no barriers. When our kids leave us from KSD, no barriers. Whatever you choose, you want to be well-prepared. Having said that, we have to have a system in place that does the fundamental components, which is access skills, being able to read right, do arithmetic, just, and that's not anything that we typically associate with, but fundamentally, that allows us to do the things that you're talking about. It allows us to access these other opportunities. So I'm going to dismiss the students right now, and we're going to go.
Okay, I guess I'll kind of do a last.
Go ahead, Brittany, I guess.
Brittany, are you getting your steps in?
I am, sorry, I, it accidentally unmuted. I'm totally listening, though.
Okay. So you'll say thanks to your students, and then we're going to go through our work. And they're going to stick around, because we're already going to do a little introduction to the rest of the crew.
I'm Eric. He's trying to kill me with this roadblock here. It's all right, it's all right, it's okay.
Like, you're on track.
Adapt, adapt, no.
Okay. Okay.
All right.
So this next component, every year the board has the opportunity to look at the goals of the objectives and the deliverables from the cabinet. This was included in the board packet, but I want to make sure that I pull this up. And as we go through this, I'm not going to go through, there are 32 of them, and I wasn't going to go through them individually. I just want to thematically put them together, so that you would see that as we're addressing each of the components of our strategic plan. And one of the areas of our strategic plan, obviously, that our students aren't engaged, right? We just talked about, how do we connect our students to the learning? And so what we have talked about here, and again, thematically, we want all of our students to be able to access grade-level curriculum. We have determined what that looks like. And so what that gets into is making sure that we have, basically it's inclusionary practices for our students, maybe with disabilities. So all of our students, you cannot get to grade level if you don't access grade level. That's just fundamental. And then, if you'll notice on the strategic plan, we filled it out through column I, and then throughout the year, the board will be getting updates on deliverables, on where we are in, relative to this. Whether it's data, or an activity, or whatever the plan may be, that's fleshed out in the rest of the columns. The first component up there is the fundamental component of professional learning communities. And the deliverable here is that the three main ideas, as well as the four pillars, will be evidenced in all of our schools. So what does that look like? Mission, vision, goals, and collective commitments, as well as evidence of results, data results. So how do we analyze data? How do we make sure that the focus of all of our school is on student learning? And that we're working in a collaborative manner? In other words, we really believe that two of us is better than one of us, when it comes to meeting the needs of our students. Go ahead.
Lance, really quick?
Yes.
I love these, that we have these objectives. When we go through our presentations throughout the year, like you're saying, they're going to be giving us updates.
Yes.
Can we make sure they refer to this? To, this is, for example, this is objective one.
Yep, we'll connect it back.
Connect it back, so it, so we're not seeing this and never referring to it again. It should be a kind of a moving, a living duck, right?
This is dynamic, and I told the cabinet as we were developing these, because we took, for lack of better words, we tried to truncate these objectives, so that they were deliverable, and that we'd know what they are. So they're big ideas.
Yeah, so like a year or two ago, in that same vein, like a year or two ago, we, we had these presentations, right? And then, and we kind of talked about like communicating at a higher level, understanding at a higher level. And then we, and then the cabinet made these slides, you guys, they had a slide that says, they kind of gave us an update, like what the presentation about to hear is going to be about this, about this. You're going to, it's going to have an action item for you, or it's not going to have an action item, or you know what I mean? So we had those, no, I really liked those, I thought that was really helpful.
Yeah, we put, we put the cover sheet on, you saw, you should see it on the ones, both of our presentations today have those.
Yeah, so I wonder if, I mean, this, to tie in this more into that, I think was.
And we can, we will fold, because the idea, just like anything, you want to be able to see, as a board, we have a strategic plan that has indicators. We'll want to see, all right, what is the progress that we're making towards those? And our commitment, or what we will do, is throughout the year, you will see, what progress have we made on access to grade-level curriculum? You will see that. What progress have we made in evidences that we're seeing the four pillars and the three main ideas? And what does that look like? They could be through either training that our adults have had, we're seeing, we just, and I'll get to my superintendent report later, kind of on the walkthroughs that we've been on, you've seen one, Brittany's been able, or Ms. Gliddon's been able to walk through, so you can kind of get a sense of what we're looking for. All right. The next piece, so this is one of the pillars, the data. And I'll just say this in general, we have a ton of information. We're like data-rich, information-poor, and that's not uncommon. Our commitment is making sure that we're getting the right information into the right hands. And that, the answer to that's to teachers, because that's where it happens. So if you know the DNA of your students, your, their abilities and their needs, and we would also talk about, do we have understanding of their knowledge, skills, and dispositions? Then we'll be able to equip the teachers with what they need to meet the needs of our students. So our obligation at the cabinet level is to make sure that the assessments that we're doing are easily accessible, easily understandable, and easily reportable. The commitment that I have is that any data that we collect, we will analyze and report out. And that's more than just like to us and to you. That also means to our parents and our students. I want, when you see this functioning at a higher level, you will be able to walk into any one of our classrooms, and every one of those students will be able to tell you what they're doing, why they're doing it, and what they need to work on. As determined by their assessment data. Like, hey, I just took the XYZ, this is what it said, and this is what I need to work on. Now, that's going to be relative to their abilities, like a kindergarten's going to say, hey, I need to work on reading, or whatever the case may be, whereas another student might articulate that in a different manner. So that's what I mean by data, and that's the data warehouse. Just scrolling, oh, there it is, thank you. Inclusive practices, I talked a little bit about that. Goalbook, that was a specific one that Brittany wanted to talk about. That's a transitional component, transition as in, we're going to utilize that resource to include with our students with disabilities, essential standards. Sometimes those get, have left, been left out, for lack of better words. So we're connecting their learning goals and their IEP goals to the essential standards, which gets us again to the overarching grade level. Inclusionary practices, you can see there's a theme there with our, with our students. Essential standards throughout the system, that's the what? That's the what of the four questions. You have to know what it is that are non-negotiable, to ensure that that student can go to the next grade level or their next step in life. Accelerate Ed is our online platform that we are, we were at Apex, right, recently? So we're transitioning from Apex to this, and there's an implementation component to that. Online learning platform that meets the needs of some of our students is not just a turnkey piece. It's learning from our adults, students, parents, all of us. Okay, safe note, and all students, this is our vision, known well, safe and valued. Digital citizenship is essential for our students. Our students are bombarded by information all of the time, and being able to ensure safety there is a critical component to that. Our learning practices with making sure that our students, you know, when you look at social-emotional, here's the big picture there. When Angel was talking about interpersonal skills, that's what we're talking about. Like, how do I express displeasure? How do I express kindness? How do I work in a group? So whether that sounds the way, but that's what that means. Our alternative learning programs, as we look at our project-based space, our legacy, making sure that we're meeting the needs of the students, as well as ensuring they're well-prepared. Because sometimes there's a balance there. And when you get to alternative settings, it is possible that you can get maybe overly focused on their immediate needs and under focused on long-term needs. And I think you have to have a balance there. So we want to make sure that that's calibrated. Our students don't go to places to be lost, they go to be found and rediscovered. And I could tell you, I was at Legacy last night, for example, that's a perfect example of what we're doing well. We want to make sure that they're tied to the systemically, and it's not just a one. Okay? Student support for behavior. We've talked very strongly about ensuring that our students' behavior is not impeding the learning of themselves and others. And when we look at that, we want to make sure that we're having a systemic approach to that, and that we have the response. And I can be, I mean, I've got examples of, we have some situations where our resources are not meeting the needs of kids, and we have others where we need to have better training, skills, and resources to meet the needs of kids. So, and a lot of that is getting them, you know, the well-known thing. Some of that is our students who may be new to us, that come with like abilities that we're not prepared for, because they're brand-new to us, there's a, there's a quick adjustment to that, and making sure it's not impeding. And we've talked about this at the board level, the behavior of one can't impede the learning of all. I don't know what that looks like. Okay? Go ahead.
I just like the use of consistent, and I think consistent across the board. We shouldn't have one school discipline one way, one doing it the other, in terms of how things are reported or done. Or, I mean, there should be some consistency amongst schools, right?
Yeah, creating a systematic approach to our learning, behavior helps all. Because as our kids move, it's just like having, if you're parenting or co-parenting, and you're, if the kids are smart, they'll go to the space that, that they feel more comfortable. The one thing, I'm going to stop right here and let you know that the formatting is just a little bit different, and maybe you've seen in the past. The objective is the, kind of the first column, we've got the strategic area, the objective's written next, then the outcome. The outcome is what we would determine as, for lack of better words, our goal. Then what I've done is we say specifically, who's doing what in order to accomplish the goal. So you'll see the next column is, this is what our students are going to be learning in order for us to achieve that. This is what our adults must learn in order for that achieve that. And this is what our leadership team must do in order for our adults to learn, in order for our students to learn, in order for us to achieve it. So every action that we have is connected back to an outcome that's assigned to that individual. Teddy, Angel, and Diego, to student outcomes. So when you see this format, I've talked about this, I think, maybe on our interview before. It's our if-then-so format, and we're going to get better at writing things this way. So everything's connected back to a student, and a student outcome. All right. Here's some kind of prepared-for-future components. So how do we determine college and career readiness? I know that we talked about the N. So I've asked questions when I meet with principals, I don't give it all out if they're watching, or if they're not, but. Our secondary principals, I ask them, okay, tell me how you know kids are college and career-ready by grade. Okay, one, two, three, all the way through. And we don't necessarily have assessments for all, so how does the PSAT fit into there? How does the SAT fit into that? And how do we know that's for all? And more importantly, when we get the information, what are we going to do? We're going to collect it, analyze it, and report it.
On that one, can we just add ACT?
Yes.
I figured it, just, SAT, SAT, and ACT.
College entrance, yeah.
Yes.
The reason I probably chose that is because there is a day. Yes. Okay, thank you.
I love that it's up there.
Financial literacy component, we see that. So again, if you look at that piece, then what do kids, you know, we have, what's our objective, outcome? If students are able to graduate financially literate and gain, this is what we want them to do. What are they going to learn? Financial literacy students. What are the teachers going to do? And what are we going to do to support that? Click, 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 all the way through. Okay? Long-term plan for expanded, for expanding middle school opportunities, what that looks like is, if we have a program, how do we, as it grows, do we have capacity? What does that look like as we're meeting the needs of our students? That's an example. And I also have on here pathways, so we have a graduation component on here, and then you'll see on the objectives that I put together, that navigation component for our students all the way through K-12. Families as partners. We're always looking for ways to better communicate with families in anything that we do. I don't know how else to say that. So I need things that go to families that are understood by families, understood by families, that they know how to support their children in learning, or in whatever, even if it's a specific situation. So we have expanded strength in our family engagement efforts, our family hub, our community-facing components, as you know, we're going to have, Dr. Real Heart's going to do just some big overview, big picture. We have Pat here. We're going to have ongoing engaging communications with our community, obviously, this year. We should have every year, but this is going to be really a spotlight, as we ask them in February to continue to support us. Student voice, you just got an example of what student voice looks like, and how that helps us understand. I know that there's, there's a difference between being smart and wise. And I think wisdom, there's a little bit of experience. At the same time, we have to be able to collectively see what are the needs of our students as they see them, and how do we balance the two? We have to have good people, work, good qualified people working with our students. Um, and that's, there's Tom is embedded in that. Onboarding, talked about that, and then all of our support systems. So we have to have great tech support. That doesn't mean our students are on technology all the time, but we have to have the resources available to ensure that they have the skills needed to be in the world, that's A I or whatever, whatever that looks like. Um, and then we have some security components, we have to make sure that our data is secure, et cetera, uh, and then that's it. So we have transparency equity, uh, that that last one is also a community-facing one. I know that we want to make sure that as uh community interests grow, that we're having conversations with our community partners to see what that looks like and how it fits with us, and I know we've talked about facility usage and other components. So again, it's, as you can tell, I didn't, I kind of went through that quickly mainly because I wanted to make sure that you all knew it's dynamic, it's gonna be reported back, and we'll give you updates throughout, and even if the updates aren't good, you're gonna hear from me, all right? I'm not hiding it, we, we won't hide anything. It's the most important thing, anything that you do is, e- even if it's not successful, you gotta evaluate the why side. Like, this is what we did, this was our outcome, it didn't work out, doesn't mean we just stop, we just keep going, because our outcomes is is what we're, where our target is. About six minutes or however long you want to go here, any questions or or thoughts on that? Or any, any type of input that you you feel would be important for us to, again, it's dynamic?
Again, I I really like this. Um, I I appreciate how detailed we've gotten, both what we're expecting to see from students to learn, what does that mean that the adults will be doing, what does it mean the leadership needs to be doing? This has been well thought through. Um, I want to make sure that we use it and and see it from the board perspective, and again, going back to what Micah said, I I actually think we can maybe fine-tune that cover sheet on these presentations so that when we go into the presentation, part of it is, is it's, it's making sure that both us and the staff are reflecting back to our objectives, that our objectives are driving us, not us driving our objectives. So so we're stating, hey, this is what we want to achieve, and so we're constantly going back to what are we trying to achieve? What are we trying to get to? And so if, if at the beginning of each presentation, they're reminding us of what our objectives are, and and this presentation is addressing objective, you know, our objective to improve data privacy and network security, here is how we're doing it. Then it helps me as a board member tie those objectives back into what this presentation is and make sure that these things are driving our behavior. And so that's where I think it might help, um, just being explicit so that both as staff is doing, you know, as the cabinet is doing things, these things are always on our mind. All of us are always thinking about these objectives, because ultimately, this is what we're trying to achieve, right?
Yep.
And so, so the more we can, we can explicitly state that in our presentations with the board, I think it would be helpful, at least my, that's my perspective, you guys chime in.
Good.
I just have two quick things. One, can we, um, can we get a, like a clean, a clean copy of it? The one in the board packet was real s- small, hard, harder to read.
So can we convert it to a PDF?
Yeah, so we can get a, yeah, just a clean, clean copy so we can look through it, whatever, and then, um, are these annual, are these more on an annual basis? Because I know in the past, we've, we've had, you know, half of them were like end of first semester and kind of reported on, like whether they're completed or not, and then some of them were second semester. So are we looking at this more annually, like for the the outcome to be quote-unquote completed?
The way that I look at these, now, some are ongoing, like I'm not gonna wait to the end of the year to have data privacy.
Right.
For example.
Right.
All right. However, having said that, there, some are ongoing, like, like a progression. So for example, uh, inclusionary rates. So if we were at an inclusionary rate that was, I'll just throw out a number, let's say it's ten percent, and we're gonna get to fifty percent, well, this is where we are now, and this is what we're doing to make that happen. Um, our essential standards are hundred percent wherever they are. So it's kind of, it answers both to that, some are immediate, but they're also monitored. Like Eric has faced probably daily with threats.
Right.
I would guess, like threats to our data. So we're, that's an evolving thing and making, and what I want the board to know consistently is like, yeah, Eric has a mission, our data's gonna be safe, here's what he's doing, especially if we're gonna introduce something that would be augment that as he presents, that would be an example.
Yeah.
The learning components, uh, they will be ongoing and we will be able to give you progress throughout the year. Uh, Melissa and I've talked about, you have adopted or we have a, an assessment calendar, for example. Well, when we're done, we just closed a window on something, we need to know what happened there, and is it getting closer? So I don't, I'm not answering any questions, so it's kind of yes.
No, no, yeah, I was, in the past, some of these were like blah, 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 by November first, and they're like, that's the deadline, and so they were kind of spread, but so, but this is ongoing and throughout the year, and there's not, yeah.
So there'll be progress towards them throughout the year, and I would say, to be safe, end of the year things, but there are some that they're like now.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'd echo what you said, I think it's critical that we don't, there's a tendency to cover up or try to, yeah, to 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 put lipstick on a pig or or however you want to say it. Um, but, but failure is not bad. I mean, you look at SpaceX, for example, they've had multiple rockets that blew up. But what they do is they go back and figure out what they did wrong and build another rocket, and that's how you move forward. And so I think to your point, we need to make sure that that everyone understands that in the process of development and progression, there is failure, that's part of the process. And that doesn't mean that someone needs to be fired or someone needs to be reprimanded. Often, it's, hey, we had an idea, we thought it would work, it didn't, that's okay. And and I think in some respects, people who are trying to be innovative and creative should be rewarded even when they fail, because they're trying. And as long as we're trying, we have the opportunity for progression. So I need, I think it needs to be clearly known amongst cabinet members, the failure is not always bad. And and make sure that people feel uh both encouraged and and uh supported regardless of the result, because that's, we need the good results. Sometimes we hide those results when they're not what we wanted. You can't do that, otherwise you can't progress.
Okay. Yeah, well, you'll, you'll get the real stuff from me, so.
Awesome. That's, I think that's it. You're good?
Yeah.
Good, thank you.
All right, well, we got five o'clock, so I'm gonna adjourn the study session, and we will be back here at five-thirty for our business meeting.